FY19 Audit and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Trying to follow up on the big fish check, the big fish story. Not quite as interesting as that. No photo opportunities here, I don't think. But with me this morning, representing the county's audit firm, Cone Resnick LLP, Mr. Dan Kenny, who's an audit partner there and oversees our engagement, and Catherine Welch, an audit manager there, who was with us day to day. So my goal today is to allow the audit firm to present to you results of the audit. This is our fiscal year 2019, June 30, year end, and today, the release of our public financial statements, our comprehensive annual financial report, as we do annually, the basis for reporting to federal and state agencies, as well as to the public and our financial disclosures to the public. We will be posting it online later today and distributing it again to those agencies. I'll return to the board within the next month or so and do a bit of overview of the county's financial position and some of the findings as far as how did we end up. Short version is a good, strong year for us financially in terms of revenue growth and meeting budgets and ending with some positive numbers as we head into your next budget session. So we will give an overview of that in the next month or so. But today, wanted to give the audit firm an opportunity to present to the board the results of that. Audit is required by state law and is good financial practice for any, you know, large organization and certainly one that handles the public trust. So an important process, and hopefully, we're pleased with the results as far as I know. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Dan Kenny.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dan.
Here to present the June 30, 2019, financial statements for Carroll County. What I'm going to do is go through the independent auditor's report, and then the report on internal control, and then the report on the uniform guidance, and then Ms. Welch will go through those charts with governance. So let's start with the independent auditor's report. That's on page 15 of your CAFER document. Indicates that we have audited the financial statements for Carroll County as of and for the year ended June 30, 2019. Indicates that management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then our responsibility under auditor's responsibility talks about the fact that our audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards, and that we believe the evidence that we've obtained is sufficient to render an opinion. And if you look at the bottom of page 15, "In our opinion, the financial statements for the county as of and for the year ended June 30, 2019 are fairly presented." On page 16, indicates on the top of the page, there was a restatement in note one, and that's actually, the details of that are on page 60. It has to do with amounts recorded in the IDA that weren't properly recorded on county's books. They have made the entries. That has been taken care of. Regarding the RSI information, this is included. It's a required disclosure, and it relates to the MDNA and the pension information. In the other information, this includes the introductory, the statistical section, and also the supplemental information. And because you have received federal funding, and as I mentioned previously, your audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, we issue a report on internal control as well. And that report is on page 212. So let's go ahead and jump ahead to 212. On the internal control report, there's two areas, internal control over financial reporting, and then also compliance. And there's one item noted in the internal control over financial reporting. Once again, that's mentioned in note one. And then on page 213, on compliance and other matters, the results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance. Moving on to page 214, in your CIFA, one of the programs we tested was the Housing Choice voucher program, and we actually give an opinion on that. And in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with respect to the grant provisions with the Housing Choice voucher program.
Is that a random choice of what you're going to look at?
Yeah. It's based on the size of the program and whether or not we've tested it before, and there's a certain selection process.
Okay.
Yep. But the good news is, you received an unqualified opinion on that.
Okay.
Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Welch, and she's going to go through the those charts with governance, the 114 letter.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As set forth by AUC Section 260, we're required to share certain communication with you all about our audit. The first thing I want to talk about is that we had no difficulties or disagreements with management during our audit, and we always enjoy working with them. They were great this year. In addition, there were no new policies adopted by the county. The Government Accounting Standards Board had new pronouncements this year, but none of them impacted the county's audit. So nothing was implemented. In the CAFER, there's a few larger estimates that management determines, one of them being the landfill post-closure care costs, and the other being the net OPEB and pension liabilities. These are an integral part, and they're very sensitive because it's based on management's estimate. So the landfill post-closure cost is based on an engineering report, and actually, this year, management went and got further communication from the state of Maryland about projects that might need to occur for the landfill, and they adjusted the liability accordingly. The net OPEB and net pension liabilities are sensitive because they are based on actuarial valuations. So management uses an actuarial firm to come up with those assumptions, and then we audit those, and we didn't find anything incorrect. Also attached to the letter are two schedules, Schedule A and Schedule B. Schedule A summarizes all of the uncorrected misstatements that occurred during the audit. None of these were material individually or in an aggregate to the whole financial statements, but I just walked through it, and we had discussed everything with management prior to issuing the financial statements. Schedule B discusses audit adjustments that were made by management based on our inquiries during our audit. One of those was the landfill post-closure, another being the prior period adjustment, which Dan discussed. On November 25, management provided us with a representation letter stating that they had provided us with all information necessary to perform our audit, and everything was true and accurate to the best of their knowledge. To our knowledge, management did not consult with any other accountant seeking second opinions based on discussions we had had with them. And then finally, we will be issuing another letter to management, which will contain some best practices based on things we saw during the audit or we had previously discussed with them, but nothing that rose to a level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness.
So there are suggestions that you're making?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Okay, so as your independent auditor, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. If there's something that we don't know at this time, of course, we will get back to you as well.
And I, the three of us have been through these before. The other two have not, but now they can't say that anymore. But I know you engage quite a few folks when you're doing this audit. Maybe touch on, and I know you did the housing thing, but there were quite a few things that you were delving into in order to get to the results that you wanted to, so...
Sure, sure. Yeah, our presentation takes about 10 minutes. We wish the audit did, but...
Exactly. That's kind of where I was going with it.
Yeah, yeah. And you mentioned a comment about attorneys. Our fee is fixed, so it takes us however many hours it takes us. Yeah, we have a large group that comes out in the field. We come out for interim, and then also, we're here from, what, August to...
And middle of September until typically the end of October.
Right. Physically in the field, and then we're back in our office, working on the information, working with management. And then we have a separate group as well that works on the uniform guidance, single audit, you know, testing the Housing Choice voucher program. You know, it is a lot of hours to get this done. It's a lot of effort from management's side. They do a very good job in preparing the financial statements. You know, we haven't been the auditor that long, but each year, you know, things have gotten more efficient in terms of their side. They've had some turnover that they've dealt with, that, you know, they've been able to transition through that, and, you know, in our opinion, we can't write it, but, you know, they've gone through that pretty well. But it, you know, it takes a long time to do the audit. Takes a lot of effort.
And I ask that to prompt you with that, because I want folks to understand that while we get these lovely little reports in front of us, there's a lot that you all were engaged in in order to get to where we are today for the brief report that you give us.
Absolutely.
And that goes to also the value that we have for our comptroller and his office and all those that you looked into, into the best practices that we have here.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that.
We're unlike, we're spot on with many of our, most of our...
Well, I'd like to add, within the organization, a lot of, you know, this is the audit of the county's whole financial statements, and although we're kind of the point in preparing them, a lot of the work happens and the audit happens. Significant time spent with IT on system audits, with HR, and budget, and others, you know, who have processes that need to be looked at. And then, you know, the agencies who oversee grants, citizen services with that HUD program, you know, pretty much annually, a significant look there. And we do about, usually between 11 and maybe up to about 15 million in some years. This year was a little over 11 million in spending of federal grants. Usually about half of that is the HUD. So, you know, a lot of different programs, the grants office, many people involved. So I appreciate my staff's involvement to kind of take the lead, and then throughout the organization, many people involved. And then working with Cone Resnick is a, you know, a good relationship, and we try to be efficient, get them what they need, and make it as smooth as we can for everyone. So appreciate their efforts as well.
I like to express my appreciation to both the firm and our staff for accommodating this audit. As a business owner, I go through an annual payroll audit, and it irritates the heck out of me every year to go through it, because every time I feel like I give them all the information, they want more. So I understand what our staff goes through to help accommodate your needs, and I can be quite testy at times. So thank you very much for being thorough, and it gives transparency to us as a board, to the public, that everything's kosher, so to speak. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, any recommendations you have heartache with in this?
For what?
From the audit firm?
Well, like you said, you know, each year for us, it's an opportunity to learn and improve something, and we work with them. The standards board keeps coming out with changes. We have to implement those. That takes a joint effort, and then each year, you know, we're catching and finding some things. So, you know, it's always a learning process, always an improvement process. You know, the minute we issue these statements, we're already beginning to think, you know, what we can improve, how we'll improve transparency, and working with the auditors to implement those standards. So, you know, it's always evolving, and as financial reporting does, and we try to keep up with that and be a leader in that as well.
The timeline for the additional letter with the suggestions that you had mentioned, what are we looking at there? Is that...
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've got some cleanup, some wrap-up to do over about the next 30 days, as far as some submissions and submitting our federal single audit to those proper agencies, and we disclose it to the bond markets and all of that. So there's still some cleanup over about the next 30 days.
Yeah. I mean, that also goes to the, to the public that probably doesn't realize the amount of work that you all provide. You know, when you hear the comptroller, it's the comptroller. So what goes on with the comptroller? Most people will tell you, well, they do something with the money. Well, it's critically important to know that behind the scenes, and to have a great organization such as yours to do the checks and balances is vitally important. So I want to thank you as well.
And make sure we're all reporting using the same rules, kind of apples to apples across all governments, all jurisdictions. We report this stuff to the state, so when you're down in Annapolis and they're talking about legislative things, and they pull up data from Department of Legislative Services and talk about how much money does each jurisdiction get or spend on these different categories, this is the kind of information that we're providing to them so that they can do those comparisons on an annual basis.
Your office is vitally critical and kind of goes under the radar. Most people, like President says, don't really know what's going on, but you guys are critical for us to be financially successful. So thank you very much.
Any other questions for Cone Resnick? That letter of suggestions, I would assume there's not a whole lot there. I mean, it's some things, as you say, Rob, that will need to be cleaned up or whatever, but in your opinion, nothing major that stood out to you. It was just...
Just a few small things.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, Ms. Welch indicated before, but they aren't material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. It's more best practices.
Okay.
And there's always, you know, comments surrounding IT. Everyone's IT is always behind. I'm not saying yours is or isn't, but IT is an area that, you know, with cyber and all that's out there, I mean, that's something you guys can always look into.
Okay.
And this report is available to the general public at the county website under Comptroller.
Yes, yep. We'll have it up hopefully today or within the week.
All right. Anything else for Dan or Ms. Welch? Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I'll be back, like I say, in a couple weeks. We'll delve a little bit into the data and some of the trends and some of the financial information. We'll give an overview and take it from there.
Oh, joy. Exciting.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, guys, very much. Happy holidays to you.
Between Rob's overview of what we've done will set you up well for what you're going to be doing in the budget of the whole process.
We're going to move into a discussion on what had come up prior, and that is about our bid limit, and perhaps looking at an increase here.
Yep. Good morning.
So Mike Myers joins Rob. Mike, good morning.
Good morning, yep. And I'll start out by thanking you. I'm usually following exciting or controversial topics, so I can't top it, so I think in this case, I may be able to, I should bring some excitement to the open meeting. Yeah, so a couple weeks ago, I gave the board an overview of the purchasing procedures and everything, briefly touched on the thought of increasing our formal bid limit. Seemed to be enough interest there to come back to you and give you a little bit more information and maybe make a recommendation. The formal bid limit is currently set at $25,000. That's in the code of public law. It's really the only thing that's in the code of public law that pertains to purchasing that we have to go to Annapolis to make any kind of change to. The $25,000 limit kind of sets the parameters around what is a formal bid, how we have to advertise it, how we have to receive bids, in some cases, how we award the bid, how we handle the contracts. Gives you remedies for any kind of protest or anything. So it really kind of formalizes the bid process, makes it a little bit more labor-intensive. There's a lot more around a formal bid than there is to anything under the $25,000. The limit was last addressed in 2001. It's been at $25,000 for 18 years. So in the briefing paper, the first kind of section of numbers there just shows $25,000 in 2001 is equivalent to about $36,000 today. So just with inflationary factors, we've never moved the bid limit, but the value of the dollar's just changed. We haven't really kept up with it. It's probably time to, you know, look at that and keep up with it. The reality of it is, we don't do a lot of bids anyway now that fall between 25 and Something becomes a formal bid when we reasonably think that it's going to exceed $25,000. Truth is, anything we now think's going to exceed $25,000 is exceeding $35,000. There's not a lot that fall between that $25 and $35,000 range. Most of what we buy in that range are vehicles, light trucks, equipment that we're buying off a contract anyway. So it never goes out the formal bid. We're just piggybacking another contract. So really, to increase the bid limit would have no impact at all on our operations. So I just am requesting that we go to the state delegation with a question to increase the formal bid limit from $25,000 to $35,000.
Yeah, we had looked a little bit, too. I don't know how much we can go into it, but, you know, we don't tend to look at other jurisdictions, say that's where we need to be, but we did look, and there was some discussion of going higher. You know, 50,000 gets thrown around. As we've looked around, I don't believe any jurisdictions are at 50,000, and one or two that did jump that high ended up bringing it back down, actually. So the 35,000 probably puts us a little more in the spot that we're seeing other jurisdictions, again, kind of inflationary adjustment. And it's the kind of thing, if we don't keep up with, at some point, you know, you go another 10, 15 years at 25,000, then you're kind of looking at the norm becoming 50, and then you're maybe up against taking it to the delegation, and now we're doubling the limit from 25 to 50, and why has it been so long? So it's the kind of thing you don't want to go, you know, decades without touching or looking at or adjusting as times change. So we think to bring it into alignment with what seems to be reasonable at this point in time, that 35,000 was the right limit. There's no urgency to this. If this year is possible and timely and not a tremendous lift for the delegation and so forth, that's good timing. If it isn't, and they want to, you know, sit on it, work through, in the next year, the recommendation's on the table whenever the timing makes sense for the board and for the delegation.
Well, I would hope that the delegation takes our recommendation seriously, and does, if we're going to do it now, get it through so that we can hit the ground running with the increase. I think it's important, so...
We assume it's an adjustment of a dollar amount within a code, not a big research project for redoing a lot of legislative, you know, code writing.
Yeah, I agree. I believe that they will follow up appropriately, and I agree with this proposal as well. The one, you know, I won't say issue, but understanding is just because you can doesn't mean you should. Just because there is an opportunity to do something under the $35,000 threshold, if it's appropriate, even though it's under that threshold, you still bring it to our attention for us to go through that consideration, correct?
You're talking about getting your approval for contracts?
Correct.
Yeah, we come up here, that's a separate issue. That's signature authority, and that'll still stay at $25,000 unless you make a change to that. How we procure would be based on a 35,000, but if anything over 25, we'd still come up here unless you made a change of the signature authority, which is all related to this.
Okay, I apologize.
And also to be clear...
It's often confused, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be something that the board has administrative authority over and could adjust that either, you know, over time or make that change concurrently. But, and also to mention to your point there, you know, we try not to look at these limits as kind of a hard must-not-do, must-do, must-not. We're always looking for what's going to deliver the best value for the dollars we're spending, and if something's a little short of this amount, but we feel that an extra competition that we could derive, now, it may mean we wouldn't have to do certain administrative steps, advertising and so forth, but we're always looking for the best possible outcomes and the best value that we can, and we'll use whatever process we think will produce that regardless of what a legislative limit is.
Okay. I like how you used the inflationary factor to show and put it in perspective how far behind we've fallen. Eventually, I think our board would like to look at the fee system we have as well, since it concerns your office, when set fees from years ago and how eroded they've become. Because also, on the receivables and the payable side, that inflationary index is affecting us. So I'm glad you're taking initiative to do this.
All right, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to roll forward with this.
Move the board commissioner request the state delegation to take the necessary steps to increase the formal bid limit from $25,000 to $35,000.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, well done. All right. Approval for the family unification program voucher application, or FUP. Oh, FUP. You got to do the acronym today.
That didn't sound right.
Well, it's the acronym. That's what it is.
I know what it is.
Christine was going to say, at some point, she was going to say, "FUP."
Yes. It was.
What about yourself at the end of it?
Well...
All right, Christine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before we get started with the family unification program, I just want to recognize Danielle and Paul. Danielle is known as our bureau chief for housing. Paul Moffett is our program manager. And a few months ago, a couple months ago, we were here talking about our CMAP score, our Section 8 Management Assessment Program, our internal score. We recently received our score from HUD, and thanks to their leadership and our team back in housing, they received a score of 100%.
Good job.
We're in good shape.
Well done.
Thank you.
Well done.
Today, we are here. Also joining us today for the family unification program, from Department of Social Services, is Carrie Vincent, who is the administrator of foster care and adoptions, and Heidi Darrow-Hutt, who's the supervisor in home services. We're seeking approval for our annual renewal of our 2019 family unification program. The FUP voucher assistance is intended to do two main things. First, to provide vouchers to families who lack adequate housing, or the lack of adequate, excuse me, the lack of adequate housing is a primary factor in the imminent placement of the family's child or children in out-of-home care. So the family unification voucher would allow them to stay home and be together. Also, for youth at least 18 years of age and not more than 24 years of age who left foster care or will leave foster care within 90 days and are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless at age 16 or older. Danielle and the team from DSS can elaborate a little bit more on this program and how many people we serve.
So, good morning, Commissioners. As Christine noted, we're actually here today to seek approval to apply for 10 additional family unification program or FUP vouchers. Currently, our housing authority has 25 FUP vouchers that we administer with our local public child welfare agency, which is the Department of Social Services. These vouchers are what they consider specialized vouchers, and they are referral-based. As Christine said, they are eligible for individuals that are FUP family, that meet the qualifications, and FUP youth. These referrals are received through our in-home services family unit and the foster care adoption unit. As noted, we have 25 FUP vouchers, and they are always fully leased at 100%. We consistently hold a waitlist. On average, anywhere from 10 to 12 individuals sit on that waitlist waiting for a FUP voucher. Would there be any other additional questions we can answer for you in regards to this program?
Regarding the permanent amount of vouchers, the partnership that citizen service has with social services is very strong, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Are you resourced enough to do the things that you want to achieve, either from citizen services and partnership with social services, or do you see any gaps in resources, whether it be money or people? You know, the vouchers are one, I mean, that's obvious, but, I mean, this is an opportunity for you to share with us. Here is what we're doing well in spite of the lack of resources. Here's what we're doing really well because the resource is provided in partnership with social services and citizen services. Here are the potential challenges that we see moving forward. Those are the type of things that have taken our very work. Again, going back to that resource, what we prioritize, we prioritize taking care of our communities just like this. My concern is, I'm not convinced that we are resourced appropriately to do all the work we achieve. Is that...
Sure. So I'll start and let Danielle and Paul fill in, because they're doing this, you know, every day. We haven't received an increase in our FUP vouchers.
Since we first initially applied, which I think was back in like 1986.
So we were... So we receive twenty-five every year, and this is a renewal for the same twenty-five. So, and with ten, what about ten to twelve people on the waitlist every year, being able to increase that number would be great, but that's out of our hands, that's federal, you know, that's HUD. After this, we're going to be talking about some other additional vouchers we have taken on. I think if those numbers continue to increase year after year, that housing will be in a position where they'd probably need another housing manager, I mean, not a housing manager.
Well, another housing specialist.
Excuse me, housing specialist, to keep up with the load as we increase the mainstream vouchers and our VASH vouchers.
On average, right now, the caseload for our housing managers is probably about three hundred, three hundred and twenty-four individuals or families that they work with.
Is that a lot?
So, it is a lot. They do annual recertifications, there's interns, there's a lot to it. And we do case management, it's all part of it. We have great relationships that we work with, all of our surrounding agencies with that definitely assist. But if our numbers continue to increase, yes, we will be looking at probably needing to add a housing specialist eventually.
Okay, just continue to be proactive in your vision on what you want to achieve. So then when you forecast it, we build on it as opposed to all of a sudden, hey, we need three more people.
Yes.
We understand how you're progressing, the manpower necessary.
Yes.
Yeah, we try to monitor their workload just to make sure that they're not hitting a tipping point with the.
Typically, not really a hundred percent, because sure enough, but ninety-five percent of the housing staff, all of our housing expenses, including salaries, are covered by our HUD dollars. There are no county dollars in the housing program.
Yes, I'm worried about the manpower, manpower in this case, the staffing appropriate.
Yes.
Do the things we want to achieve.
And we appreciate that.
What's the length of time most people would be on a voucher?
Honestly, when you look at the length and time overall for all of our vouchers, typically it's under five years. I mean, you do have those that are either older or disabled that may stay longer, but I would say probably eighty to ninety percent of our voucher holders are only on for about five years.
And then they're.
And they're successful in relinquishing.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners approve the application and accept the award for up to ten family unification program vouchers.
Second.
Okay, noticed that there was no acronym in the motion, just saying. Okay. No, that's his vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. By the way, you handled that very well, Danielle, with the acronym thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it's a, it could be an issue. All right, 2019 mainstream voucher program.
Okay, so on November fourteenth, we came before you because we received notification of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars in annual funding to support thirty-one additional housing choice vouchers for the 2019 mainstream voucher program. We were awarded those thirty-one mainstream vouchers. These vouchers will assist non-elderly persons with disabilities who are transitioning out of institutional or other segregated settings at serious risk of institu- institu- you can read that, I can't.
Institutionalization.
Thank you. I still have a FUPs in my.
Seems harder than a FUP, isn't it? Okay.
Or at risk of becoming homeless. So today, we're seeking approval to accept the award. When we came originally, we did not ask for acceptance of the award just to submit. So we did receive thirty-one additional, which brings our mainstream vouchers up to fifty.
What is it, fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
You anticipate keeping that number, it's not going to go down? You know what I mean? So you get thirty-one more, so my guess is we're going to keep those thirty-one more in the future.
So there's twenty-some-odd.
We already have over sixty-five individuals on the waitlist referral-wise for those thirty-one. So, yes, we can utilize them and keep them fully leased and utilized.
So I see the partners here. Is there a breakdown in who gets what, or how does it work with that?
It's all based on referral and who submits for application.
Right.
Through these?
With mainstream.
Through the partners?
The way they do it's with all of our nonprofit agencies that we partner with. So Change, Arc Target, HSP, the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities, CC YSB, which is You Service.
Freedom Center.
Freedom Center. So what happens is, the way mainstream works, it is first come, first served on a referral basis. So we receive that referral packet, and we start working with that individual. The first individual to get everything in that's required and to qualify will get that voucher. So out of those sixty-five, they are in many various stages of being approved, and the first one to get everything in will get that voucher.
Those that continue to be on the waiting list, where are they at?
Where are they? You mean currently living, or?
Yeah.
Well, it.
How, how, I apologize.
That's okay.
Is thirty-one enough? I mean, should we be going back and saying, hey, thanks for thirty-one, yes, we want to prove that, but?
Well, what will happen is they're going to have another release of funding next fiscal year. So what will happen is because we were awarded in the first two rounds, we will be able to apply for additional. So what it is, just like last time, as long as we can, I think, show that we are fully leased and utilizing all of those vouchers, we would definitely receive more.
And what happened, how we got on the waitlist is because the original twenty-two that we received, we filled all those, so we just, and we knew we had applied for this new one, so we kind of created a waitlist to have them ready in various stages.
How many did we ask for?
Well, initially, in each round, we've actually initially asked for seventy-five. So at least the number keeps increasing.
All right. All right, any other questions?
I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners accept the annual award of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars for the 2019 mainstream voucher program.
I'll second.
All right. Hearing no more, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous on that, thank you. Medicare improvements for patients and providers. Paul and Danielle, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Joining me now, Celine Steckel and Gina Valentine.
And while all three of you are here, because you weren't here this morning, unless you were listening, we kudos again in reference to the Veterans Award that you received. I mean, we received it, but it's as a direct result of the hard work that you guys are doing earlier, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, now Christine, do your thing.
Okay. Another acronym, our MIPA.
What's this one?
MIPA.
Little easier to.
Medicare Improvements for Patients and Providers Act. The Maryland Department of Aging receives MIPA funding from the Administration for Community Living for Federal Fiscal Year Twenty. The ACL is the federal agency that disperses an allocation to each state, and then the state disperses funds to each local jurisdiction. This grant will enhance outreach efforts and activities that promote enrollment of Medicare beneficiaries into several different Medicare programs. We're seeking approval to submit and accept this award for September thirtieth, 2019, through September twenty-ninth, 2020. And Gina and Celine will give you a little bit more information about this.
So the MIPA funding is actually broken out into three different priority areas, and there's different funding allocations attached to each area. Even though the overall award is only seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, we do have to target specific areas with this funding for the three priority areas. Priority one provides grants to us to operate our ship and enhance our outreach to eligible Medicare beneficiaries regarding their benefits, to make sure that those that are eligible for extra help or low-income subsidy, our Medicare savings program, and conducting outreach activities to prevent disease and promoting overall wellness, that we target those areas. The target population for the individuals, as Christine said, are for people that are under sixty-five with disabilities, rural Marylanders, and also those folks that are new to Medicare. Priority two targets any combination of the four target populations, but it's really to be used for community-based projects that we're doing. And some of the things that we're planning to do with this grant for fiscal year twenty are to provide monthly transition to Medicare topic conversations, Medicare One, Part One, and then transitioning to Medicare Part Two. We provide those at several of our local library branches in the evenings, so it's easily accessible to people that are still working. We also provide outreach and education during our locals' senior farmer-market voucher programs, where people are coming into our senior centers to qualify for those vouchers. And during those programs, we also are screening for folks that may be able to, and eligible to enroll in our low-income subsidy programs to help them make Medicare more affordable to them. Party Three targets partnering with our MAP staff, which we already do day in and day out, because our ship coordinator is co-located in our Maryland Access Point Office. So that outreach is very easy for us in education. We provide training to those MAP staff to make sure that they have the newest information about Medicare enrollment, so that they can provide that same level of application assistance, screening, and enrollment to our beneficiaries, or eligible beneficiaries, for all of the programs right in our office, so that that is seamless. And they also work with our volunteers. We currently have seven long-tenured volunteers in our ship program, which are instrumental in everything that we've done. We just finished open enrollment for Medicare Part D, and that closed down this past Saturday, December seventh, and it was a very, very busy time in our offices. I'm going to let Gina give you some of the statistics from our programs.
Really, just quickly, like through outreach events and the Medicare Part D open enrollment that Celine mentioned, the educational sessions, and we typically serve around, well, this year we did around fourteen-hundred individuals, you know, through this program. So it is definitely a beneficial program that helps people to pay for their deductibles, their Medicare deductibles, their copays, to enable them to, you know, continue to afford their health care, be able to go to the doctor, pay for their medications. So the program really helps to keep our population healthy.
I just want to commend you for even going after small grants like this, because they add up after all the.
They do, and this is just a piece of the funding that goes in to fund our coordinator position for the ship program.
I'll move the Board of Commissioners approve the Medicare Improvement for Patients and Providers Act grant submission and acceptance of the award. Second.
Okay, any other questions on MIPA? All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all about the acronyms today. All right.
Don't print them in the future for him, would you?
Yeah, that could be worse.
Yeah, because that could be worse. Okay, request approval to proceed to a public hearing, because that's the way this has to roll, but we've been talking about this for quite some time, and that's enhancement to our police pension disability benefits, and our Director of HR, Kim Frock. And I'll let you do the rest of the introductions.
I will. Again, Kimberly Frock, HR Director. With me is Mary Claire Cheshire. She is our pension attorney. She's with White for Taylor Preston. And on the end is Werner Muller, he's our Retirement Plans Manager.
She's one of our good lawyers, is what she's trying to say.
So unfortunately, there's no acronyms here, so.
We can make them up, though.
No, 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 no. We're good, seriously, just let it roll, okay?
Okay.
Because there's been some things happening from the peanut gallery that you all don't want to know about, okay? So let's just roll.
All right. As part of the FY20 budget process, the Board of Commissioners included funding for potential enhancements to the Carroll County Certified Law Officers Pension Plan, as well as the Pension Plan for Correctional Officers. The proposed amendments to both of these plans are an increase in the benefit for catastrophic line-of-duty benefit, disability benefit, sorry. Current, we have thirty percent for certified law officers, correctional officers currently have nothing. The proposed is forty-five percent for both. This also establishes a benefit for non-catastrophic line-of-duty disability. Currently, that is zero for both corrections and law officers. It will go to thirty-five percent. And again, these are based on salaries. There's also an earned income offset if the officer is disabled and able to work. This is something that, when Werner and I discussed it, and we discussed it with Roberta as well, the current offset is ten thousand dollars. We felt that was inappropriate, it should be higher than that, so we set it at thirty thousand.
Keep in mind, higher is better.
Higher is better. So the thirty thousand more or less came from if they could work at minimum wage for a yearly salary, it would come out to around thirty. Back when it was ten, it was probably tied to seven, seven-twenty-five an hour. So that's where that came from. So higher is better, if they are able to work and earn money, we're not offsetting as much with the pension.
Okay, so what, so what happens if they, if it's thirty thousand and two?
Then we offset.
Well, it's one for two, so there would be a one-hundred-dollar offset.
Thirty thousand and two dollars.
Thirty thousand and two dollars.
It'd be fifty cents.
Thirty thousand and two dollars, right. I'm just, I'm trying to think of a scenario where, or trying to come up with, is this the right number?
This is minimum wage, right?
It pretty much comes out the minimum wage for the year, yes.
Current, based on current?
Based on fifteen dollars an hour.
Based on fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
What's current right now, eleven?
It'd be eleven on January first.
Okay. So you've kind of went above that?
Yes.
And, okay.
So we didn't have to revisit that.
So it's going in the right direction?
Yes.
Hold on, hold on. Yes, no, go.
What are you appropriate on this? Looking at minimum wage.
You're talking about the earned income? So, work with me here. Explain that again. Explain the increase in the earned income and what happens, so.
Okay, if the injured officer is able to work, whether catastrophically injured or non-catastrophically injured.
In another capacity.
In another capacity.
Not in the, in the, in how, what they're.
Correct.
Okay.
Because catastrophically injured, you're not able to perform the duties of the law officer or the correctional officer.
That's non-catastrophic.
Non-catastrophic. So, and I'll let Mary Claire give you the full definitions of stuff, which we use the industry standard.
Yeah, I'd like to hear those as well, so.
You want to cover those?
There's a distinction between a catastr- that I see in public safety retirement systems is we distinguish disabilities as both catastrophic and non-catastrophic. Catastrophic meaning essentially that you cannot, that the individual cannot work.
In the capacity in which they were hired to work?
At all.
At all.
They cannot work at all. Non-catastrophic is they cannot work as a correction officer or a police officer. So the standard, for example, an individual who can't fire a gun cannot be a police officer. However, that individual could do other jobs. And the idea is, that I've seen in my experience, is people do want to work, but if you're barred from working because you're collecting a disability benefit, there's, it's just not a good result. So what the earned income offset says is you can earn up to thirty thousand dollars in a year, and your disability benefit will not be impacted. Above thirty thousand dollars, for every two dollars you earn, there's one dollar of offset.
Okay, so your question was, that's why, that's why I wanted to get a better understanding of that, because your question is.
People who want out and, or the type of job they can have at that point, because they're losing disability, the more they make, the more they lose in that case.
In that case, yes.
Yeah, so if we're at minimum wage, I would like, you know.
Well, actually, it's higher than minimum wage, just be clear.
Well, it.
Well, it's higher for now, yes.
Right. But, but in order to.
Just to compare, Frederick County, they use percentage for the earned income offset, it's twenty-five percent. So if you assume that every officer in Frederick County makes a hundred and twenty grand, that gets you to the thirty grand. So I think the thirty thousand is more than, more than fair. It's a significant increase from the ten that we had.
Well, let's be clear, it is, yeah. I just wanted to understand what happens when an individual gets to that, that's all, and what happens above that? That's where I was going here. So in your mind, it's better to have, whatever the figure is, thirty thousand, whatever, than a percentage, Werner?
No, I'm, to me, it's, it doesn't matter one way or the other, I was just making a comparison to another county. If you feel that the thirty thousand is too low, I mean, I think it's perfectly equitable, so.
Okay.
Basically, you're saying you have to make a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars outside in order to make thirty?
You'd have to make a hundred and twenty...
If you use a percentage, right.
So, so what's your...
What if that a fire department, or how, how do they work?
Well, it's similar over there. And it, again, it's jurisdictional, that's the problem. Because they're all, they're all, they all have a little different way in which to do it. I mean, I know how it would have worked, and I didn't have to do that, thankfully. But I know some of my colleagues that I've worked with over the years had to, and what happened in Baltimore County. But it's different in Frederick, it's different in Montgomery, it's different in Howard. There's not a, there's not a set, there's not a set limit there, which I think it's good to get it as high as we can now, so that we don't have to revisit next year or the year after. So let's, I want to make sure we've set, set that figure that is adequate, so that we're not coming back based on inflation or whatever happens with the goofy minimum wage stuff that comes out every, because I think there's another one coming out this year from rumors on. But anyway.
Yeah.
So I know that doesn't answer your question, but it, it just, it's so all over the map.
Well, I'm looking ahead here, a little further than just this paper. As we move into our next program here with the fire department coming up in the future, I was just, there'd be very similar type.
Well, it's a valid point, because we are gonna have to...
Further ahead, five, six years.
Yeah, well, might be less than that, yeah.
But again, it's not, it's not apples to apples. I mean, I understand we're looking at another service, but I also believe that we're still too low. I mean, I applaud us getting to where we're going.
Too low in what, Ed? Where are you?
All of it.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're, you know, we're good, because we're moving in the right direction.
Well, and remember...
We can't handle a hockey-stick approach to two-thirds, but I do believe, not one...
Okay, all right.
I do believe, again, getting back to that Priorities and Resources Day, if we want the strongest force for security, and we're asking them to do more and more continuously, then we've got to have the ability to resource them to ensure, one, their job security, but also the ability to do the best they can at all given times. And that includes having a program in place for disabilities there, both cashed off and non-catastrophic. I never thought anything of it when I was in uniform for my whole life, and I believe that a police officer should not also feel that way. That they are going to be limited if they do get themselves hurt. And it also causes them to hide in situations while they're on, in uniform. And I'm very concerned about that. That we're going in the right direction, but I'm gonna continue to push this to get to where we want to go, or where I believe we should be in the next cycle, because these numbers are still too low, so. But as far as going to public comment, yeah, I definitely believe we need to go the right step.
Well, which was gonna be mine.
If I may make a suggestion, and I think Commissioner Rothstein summed it up. This is a request to proceed to a public hearing.
Right.
At the public hearing, you're gonna hear from impacted parties, stakeholders. You may decide to reduce or increase it after the public hearing. So you don't need to decide this today, in other words.
Right, and I appreciate those comments, but all of us were aware of the constraints that we had when it came to the cash and the law, okay? And I think the good faith effort here to at least raise it, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, I mean, I've been there. I've been on the, on the top of a hundred-foot ladder thinking, you know, what happens if I slip and fall? But the fact of the matter is, I think we made incredible progress here. And my only question was, again, I wanted to make sure that that thirty thousand dollar was appropriate. That's, the rest of it is what it is. And I think the phased-in approach that we're doing suits the way in which we spend our money here in Carroll. So, and I think, again, that's the only way we can do it. So that's the only question I had. That's why I wanted additional explanation on that thirty thousand dollar figure, to ensure that that was, and I think you answered that for me, Werner. If you're gonna do it and base it on percentage, based on that kind of a salary, then I believe I'm good. So, but we can talk about that later. This is, again, and I appreciate that with the, was that my flag or your flag that you threw? Today is just whether or not we want to proceed with the figures that are in front of us to that hearing. So.
I would like...
Yeah, just to go...
Right, right.
I would like to state that I'm very, very pleased to see the disability for correctional officers in line with law enforcement, especially when we look at headlines about correctional officers being stabbed. I don't know whether it's a statistic, but I think they might be more apt to be stabbed than a law enforcement officer. So I'm very happy with that. As far as the income offset, since it's set at a nominal figure, not a percentage, it's only be impacted by the inflationary index, and just like our person that you issued earlier. So I'd like us to be able to look at that at least every five years, because that thirty thousand figure might need to be increased over time incrementally, or that benefit to our officers is all slide backwards, and it'll suffer a loss from inflation. So I'd really like us to keep an eye on that figure and potentially move it up over the next couple of years, as finances dictate, and the inflationary market will as well. So thanks for all the work that you guys put in this. I know this was arduous, and it can be contentious between both air administration and administration of law enforcement, very, very passionate about it, and rightfully so. These individuals put their lives on the line, and I'm very grateful for everyone getting to this point, and I'm looking forward to the public hearing.
Mr. Burke, procedural question. If there are just parts of this that we would want to readdress, we still need to go to a public hearing, right? In the next year or two or three?
Yes, if you want to update it or amend it, it would require...
So whatever we do, it's not the entire package, it would, it would be, it may... A change to just a part of it, right?
Just like this, all you're doing is changing a very minor portion of the overall pension.
And that's where I was going with my comments, because we're, this is not something...
You don't have to rewrite the whole plan, you just change the piece you need to.
Right, okay, okay. All right. Were you done?
Yes, sir.
Before you were interrupted? You knew you were gonna be interrupted. Any other questions on this? And again, let's keep in mind that we're gonna hear from whoever. The time to hear is at the public hearing, obviously.
Yeah, and I think as we move ahead with our vision and resources for the future, we'll make, we'll look at things differently.
Everybody good?
Yeah. I make a motion that we authorize this proceed to public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll work with the county attorney's office to advertise it as appropriate, and we'll see, and it's gonna be January.
Yeah, it'll be January now, so, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that goes to a procedural question, too. If, when we have the public hearing, and it's, and we decide after that, does it go into effect then immediately, or how does that work?
Yeah, if there's a reason, I mean, after the public hearing, if you leave the record open for five days, it would have...
Okay, I just, okay, all right. No, we need to, we need to kick it, and let's, let's roll, is my point here. Okay, all right.
And Ms. Frock, if the Ravens beat the Packers in the Super Bowl, we'll have a friendly bet going.
Okay.
That ain't gonna happen. Seriously, the Packers? I mean, come on. The Dolphins have a better chance of getting there than the Packers.
That's pushing it.
That was good.
You like that?
That was actually great.
So, you like that?
I think somebody booked you with that comment, though.
What?
I don't know.
Muleburt.
Yeah, that's true, I should have used that one, that would have been better. All right, apparently, we've been doing some comprehensive rezoning, I don't know. That's what somebody told me. And today continues the efforts, as we maybe get to a result here, we'll see. So, are you again? Where, where have we seen you before?
Yeah, just a few times, just a few times, good morning.
Linda, good morning.
So we are here before you this morning for your consideration of four ordinances. Ordinance two zero one nine oh six, which is the adoption of the zoning code revisions. Ordinance two zero one nine oh seven, which is the adoption of the revisions to Chapter one fifty-five for subdivision, and that was because of the changes made in one fifty-eight. Ordinance two zero one nine oh eight, and those were for the forty-six maps that were changed as a result of the comprehensive rezoning effort to move properties from their respective business neighborhood, retail, business general, industrial restricted, and industrial general zones to move them into the new classifications of C one, C two, C three, I one and I two, as well as a housekeeping ordinance to clean up other parts of the code that were impacted as a result to the changes to one fifty-eight and one fifty-five. And then finally, Resolution one zero five zero two oh one nine, which is an implementation resolution. So we have been before you, as Commissioner Wance said, many times over the past year, tend to be exact. The first time we met with this board was in twenty eighteen, right after you all were sworn in for going over the work sessions to introduce this board to the comprehensive rezoning effort. If you'd like, so we presented to you on December fifth the packet of materials that you'll be considering hopefully today. And in the packet are each of the ordinances. And for Chapter one fifty-eight, we also provided a struck version redline, so that you could see the changes in relation to what was existing and what the proposed amendments are. And then also a clean version was sent up later in the weeks you would have, what the organs would look after it is adopted. So with that, would you like to go over any more of the use table with regards to Chapter one fifty-eight? We can go by use by use, so for instance, if there's any changes you'd like to see, or any further discussion in the C one classification?
So, I mean, for me, the answer is yes.
Okay.
There's a few considerations that I want to put forward and amend what we've done throughout the year. And we can start with the C one. The C one, we have permitted use, a handful of conditional uses, and a whole bunch of non-permitted uses. What's come to, you know, my attention in thinking through this is not all C one properties are equal, just as not all parts of the county are the same. C one properties in District five, my district, Eldersburg, Sykesville, are very different than C one properties up in District one. And the needs could also be different for, so like gas stations in taverns and other, you know, uses, where I won't say it would be contentious, or not contentious, but there's a definite specific need. I think to ensure that we make things permissible, but we take into consideration where these properties actually are located, that we should be looking at conditional uses, not just permitted. If we look at permitted by itself, it's gonna go through a process, and even when they break ground, it's gonna conform, because it's just gonna be permitted use through planning and zoning. If we make it conditional, it'll take an additional step through Board of Zoning Appeals to ensure also the public and community have a much more reasonable voice in consideration for the use of the C one properties. You know, some of them specifically are those that go twenty-four-seven operations, those that don't necessarily conform to that residential, that community area. And when we went through it, I didn't have that, I didn't think through that as far as, I was thinking, what's good for the goose, good for the gander, all C one properties are alike. That's not the case. And the communities are very different, and we should take a better understanding that they are different. So my recommendation is that the permitted uses in C one be looked at as being conditional. And it doesn't have to be all of them, but there are some significant ones that I would look at being conditional at this point, so.
Do you want to go over each C one permitted use then?
If you point us in the direction, which page?
So if you'd like to start on page one nineteen?
Well, they actually have the clean copy, so it'd be page ninety.
Oh, okay.
Well, they have that, but the one that was sent up, are you working off of the clean version?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be page one nineteen of the struck-out version. Or ninety, if you have the clean copy in front of you. And we can also pull it up on screen, too, for Commissioner Weaver.
Yeah, yeah. He's going to get, but go ahead, he'll catch up. Yeah, that's fine, he's getting one.
One nineteen.
One nineteen. Go ahead.
So, again, ag is permitted across the board in all districts. Conditional already is the shop for service, repair, or sale of farm equipment. The next two, communication towers, are conditional. So then moving down to commercial services, the next permitted use is a fuel station.
I'm getting there. I got, I got it. Oh, you just messed me up.
Oh, you were, I'm sorry, I was... So the first permitted use is on page one nineteen, fuel station.
Which I would recommend to be conditional, as opposed to just permitted.
In C one?
In C, yeah, yeah, I'm talking, I am focused a hundred percent on C one at this point. There you go. So that fuel station making it conditional and not just permitted.
Now, we did identify two existing gas stations in Gamber at the intersections of ninety-one and thirty-two that are currently permitted, but would become non-conforming as a part of this. It doesn't change their, them being allowed to be there, but if they wanted to make any changes, they would have to come back in then for that conditional use approval. And that's all we could identify in the county with regard to that.
But I'd like Commissioner Weaver to be a part of this conversation, since it falls in his district.
Just take it along, he'll come back. Now, I'm gonna go out this door, and he's gonna come in that one.
No problem.
So that'll work, that'll work. He'll still be here, though.
I'm gonna lock that door, Monsieur Weaver.
They pulled it up on the screen, Dick, so.
You got your X's.
So...
Okay, so say, go again, Ed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just look at the conditional use of, within C one only. And the first one on the screen you'll see is fuel station. There are two fuel stations in the counties that are in C one right now, and those are both in your district, the Royal Farms and the...
Things like Hives or something, or Sicko.
They would then become conditional, so there would be a change.
Well, they wouldn't become, well, they would become conditional, but they would be non-conforming until they came in again, if they needed to for conditional use approval.
But my recommendation is that the fuel station is permissible, it's conditional for fuel stations in C one.
Just for fuel stations or for...
Well, we're going down the list.
Okay.
So fuel stations is the first.
And the basis behind this, again, is because you see a difference in, in...
In the community, so...
So in Eldersburg, you feel as if it's different? One, okay.
I mean, so, so, yeah, we have neighborhoods where there's C one properties, but what's right up against them are major thoroughfares like Twenty-Six with plenty of fuel stations out of the states. So they don't conform to those areas. Whereas in another part of the county, Lineboro would have C one properties without resources or, you know, services tied to them, and therefore they would want maybe a gas station or something, or a code or something like that, so. That's all, it's just, it's to conform to the neighborhoods as well as, you know...
The code enforcement would be able to determine that, right?
If it's permissible, it wouldn't go through those steps.
Yeah, wouldn't have to go.
So therefore, make it conditional to get folks more engaged on whether it should or should not be in that piece of property.
Okay.
And that's why.
I agree.
So are we, I guess, for clarification, or is that going then, is the decision to make that conditional, or...
Apparently, yeah, I think that's where the, I think that's where we're going with that, so. And I see that, I see your point there. And I see that, I, I, I see your point there, um.
It, it's, it's not to disallow it, it's just to take a step with the accessory.
And that it fits into where it's being proposed.
Exactly, exactly, that's what it's all about, so.
Okay.
Anything else on this page before I go to it?
On that page? No, the next slide.
Um, we'll just move down to the next permitted, so um, on page one twenty, under eating and drinking establishments, catering establishment and banca- banquet facility is permitted.
And again, all three, the catering restaurant, tavern bar, limited properties in C one, they should conform to that community. Uh, you know, limiting twenty four seven operations, limiting, you know, again, is that the best place for that? Not saying it shouldn't be, make them conditional to go through the step of communities engagement, so. Is that, okay.
So make all of those conditional as well?
Then where does it stop? My question, you guys now, you're gonna, well, yeah, are you gonna do everything and see what's gonna be conditional because they're all different neighborhoods?
Asking, you're, you're gonna see there's not a whole lot, that's the thing, there's not a lot of permissible.
The first, well, there's, I, I, I don't know.
Now, that's kinda where I was going, I mean, I get, I get the, the.
You, you're, you're gonna see it's not gonna change much after this.
Well, I, I don't know if I'm a restaurant or a tavern or bar owner or whatever, or a fuel station owner and I, and what permitted or was, we put it down from when it now, ask for the conditional, I might have a objection to that.
Well.
And, and.
Just, just to, just to make sure if it's an existing facility.
Yeah, I know it's existing, it's just be not conformant until it come up.
Just wanted to make sure.
I understand, right, I got that.
Those breaking grounds, knee grounds.
Yeah, I got you, but, and I was just, I don't know. Just because it's C one.
Both because of C one, it's, these are properties that are, are embedded in neighborhoods.
Yeah, I, I got you.
That's, that's the only reason, so. I'm not saying I, I don't wanna allow it, but I wanna make sure when it's planned, we go through the process, it's thought through, that's all.
And every property is different.
It is.
You really have to.
That's right. And I, and that's the whole, and that's the whole reason, every property is different.
I understand, I, I know, by making this conditional, are you gonna go through the access process and then, is that the process until the public hearing?
Yeah.
So you're gonna get the, it depends on where it is and who's up and.
Exactly.
Who you up or about, it will come in and protest it.
It goes before the board of zoning appeals and the board of zoning appeals determines whether or not it's um, the appropriate location.
But it allows the public to come in and.
It does give the public an extra step.
Or is it, again, it's still a decision made by board zoning appeals to either allow it or not.
So based on that thought, anything that's got a P in C one, you're condi- you're, you're, you're saying.
I don't believe so.
Well, I don't, still, a bunch of them in here and what makes, what, 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 what's the difference between a fuel station and, I mean, what do you, what would you like to, to let permitted stay as? Because there's a lot of permitted in here.
Medical or dental center, professional business office, uh, you know, contractor, I mean, leaving those as permitted. Veterinary facility, keep it as conditional. Pretty much everything else stays the same.
You're just asking for those four changes?
So you're, you're con- you're concerned about restaurants and, and gas stations?
I'm concerned about twenty four.
Like, that's what's coming down there.
Well, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a good point, I'm, I'm concerned about twenty four seven operations. Um, I'm concerned about things that may not be conforming into those communities, so that's all.
Okay, well, I don't, I look at a restaurant as twenty four seven operation, I don't, or a catering establishment, I don't look at that as twenty four seven operation.
One twenty four.
And that's.
Our restaurant in whole county. And that's a, yeah, here again, so. I mean, I, essentially, but I, I think.
My point is not to put conditional limitations, but I do want the potential conditions because things are different across the county.
Okay.
We're not a whole G S town, we're not all built alike, um, that's all. And, I mean, that, that's, that's the purpose of this, you know, because I cannot, I do not believe you can say the type of operations for a restaurant or whatever, like twenty four seven is a concern. You can't say, you can't make a blanket statement saying that anything go twenty four seven is conditional in a C one property. I don't believe we can, believe that's gonna cause more of a challenge, right? Can I understand?
That'd be difficult for, for a zoning code.
It would be difficult for a zoning code to say twenty four seven is conditional regardless of, of the use. So therefore, I'm looking at types of uses that could lend themselves to that type of.
We're just looking at land use here, not code.
No, we're looking at code, we're looking at zoning, we're not looking at land use. We're, we're looking at across the board, the, the code that could be used on what's identified as C one properties.
Okay, I see, that's where.
And that's, yeah.
That in place anyway, you simply go through the?
We, we do, but when, but my point is we cannot, we cannot add to the zoning code hours of operation. That's not part of, that's part of, you know.
That would be a conditional, a conditional use.
What's that?
That would be a conditional, a conditional use.
That would be a condition, yeah, and you can't do that, so I'm saying those that lend themselves to those twenty four seven operations, let's just add the additional step of conditional, that's all.
Alright, well, I don't believe restaurant lends itself to twenty four seven.
Okay, and that's fine, and I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, you know.
You're almost gonna have to go down through each one of these because some of those things that you have.
Yeah, right. Right.
Concerns about, I mean, there's a ton of them on here that are permitted. If you're worried about twenty four hour and what the NIMBYs are gonna say, 'cause that's where you're going. You know, not in my back, let's, 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 let's take care of the not in my backyard folks.
So let's.
I mean, that's where you're going here and.
I believe.
I mean, I'm troubled.
You're gonna see this is gonna be very quick.
I, I don't think, looking at the list here, I don't think it's gonna be.
In C one?
No, you've got a ton of things that lend itself to lighting and everything else that the, that the not in my backyard folks are gonna come out and crow about. I mean, let's just go indoor recreational facility. I mean, there's one, museum.
I'm, I'm not pushing, but, uh, uh, I, I'm saying leave it as is.
So then you're back, you're, you're to, you, you're back to a gas station?
I'm back to a gas station, I'm back to taverns, and that's the, yeah, that's really where my focus is.
Just those, just those three things.
Right now, yeah.
What, what do you mean right now?
I have to look at the list.
Oh, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
No, but I mean, so.
Commercial parking lot or garage?
Fine.
I mean, really?
Wait, where, where are you at?
One twenty five, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking ahead to see, based on what your, your line of thinking is here as to what everything that could be.
Correct, correct.
A challenge for those that.
That could be conditional.
That are living somewhere that all of a sudden say, well, we don't want that. Okay, so.
Tell you, would you be there for it?
Anyway, I, um, that, that you're gonna have to change because you want everybody to be happy.
I want you to be happy.
And I'm not sure that I wouldn't, with all due respect, hear from those that are in the trenches that this would affect. I mean, what's the BZA gonna, I mean, we're putting a lot of, we're putting a lot on the backs of the BZA.
We're adding, that's why we're there, two or three additional.
Why do you have these at all?
We're, we're adding two or three additional conditional uses. We're, we're not adding the entire list. We're not really adding any. We're adding.
Not from.
We're adding.
Fuel stations, let's go down the list then.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Alright, so fuel stations, you think should be conditional.
Correct.
Catering, you think should be conditional, restaurant, you think should be conditional, tavern, you think should be conditional?
Keep going.
Contractors office.
Next.
Medical or dental center, a lot of traffic there, you're okay with that?
Where are you looking?
Page one twenty one.
One twenty one, I'm going right down the list, professional or business center.
Medical or dental center, um.
I mean, there's a lot of medical or dental centers that have evening hours.
I don't know if we break down medical and dental centers into urgent care centers and twenty four seven operations, do we?
I believe that would be included.
That would be included.
Yeah, that would be included.
Correct.
We don't, we don't break them out.
Right.
Yeah, we don't do it. Right.
I mean, I.
Right, so keep going.
Wow. Okay, indoor recreational facility? Potential air for a lot of trouble. Outdoor recreational facility? Butcher shop? General retail or general service? You could have a twenty four hour convenience store.
Conditional.
That would, just playing devil's advocate, that would create a lot of non-conformities to make general retail less than ten thousand.
That's the problem, that's where I'm going with this because we're, we're gonna create a huge uh, lineup now of those that are non-conforming based upon making all these conditional, which is what we didn't wanna do in the first place. Right? Or am I missing something?
Especially, this one in particular, it could be problematic for the county.
Okay, so let's go on to that, keep going. I mean, if you wanna go down the list, I.
Well, you're gonna have to, Ed.
I, I agree.
Next is single family or two family.
Single family or two family dwelling?
Please, you, you know residential by itself.
In a rural village.
Correct, is, yeah, that, the, the residential's done. Group assisted living, done. Cause we've all agreed to that, how? We want that.
So you, you're good with permitted?
I am.
Well, how does that differ from a gas station?
You're kidding me.
The traffic at these facilities, this is where you're going with it, you're concerned about the, you're, you're concerned about the neighborhood, right?
Right.
Well, how does a gas station differ from a nursing home where there's twenty four hour traffic?
Okay, well, so two family dwelling, so make it two flights.
Exactly, that's.
So what's wrong with that?
I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, what I'm saying is.
It's permitted.
It's, it's permitted. We're saying that it's permitted, if we're gonna say it's conditional, then, then, then we've opened up a whole new can of worms here. And you can't base one thing and not do the others. So, you know, based on your line of thinking, and it's not that I disagree.
Right.
My, my problem is the challenge that you're opening up here. I mean, where does, as you kinda said, you, we asked the question, where does it stop?
Right.
Um, you know, I can tell you that I think there's more traffic in a nursing home than there is at a gas station. So they should be conditional.
So they be conditional.
You know, community meeting halls, you're gonna have people meeting there, all hours could be, that has to be conditional.
Your parking garage in your, your.
Your parking garage is a huge problem, that's worse than a gas station, that has to be conditional.
Okay.
Religious establishment has to be conditional.
Okay.
Artists and manufacturing has to be conditional.
That's what you want?
That's not what I want. I'm telling you that that's what the, that's what we're doing here.
I am more than happy to make things conditional to ensure that things are conforming the way we want it, our community to look
Alright, well then.
and our neighbors to look.
Well, then before we do that, I would like to see a list of those that are currently there that would become non-conforming.
That could be a little problematic because we don't know how many are legally operating there and it's hard to determine sometimes too from the S D A data what actual businesses there from that, without doing additional site visits. So it's something that we can do, but it would take a little bit of time.
We did our fieldwork almost two years ago, we do have a listing to the best of our knowledge from, we can tell from the outside of buildings and such. Um, but that was January of two thousand eighteen.
Okay, well, isn't a condi- isn't a, a decision like this going to require us to go out there and see what those facilities are now? Because they're gonna be non-conforming?
Um, it would be helpful to know, but I mean, it's not imperative for the decisions to be made, but it, it's information, additional information for you to have in your decision-making process.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be huge for the BZA.
Well, they would come back if there would be changes to those properties from being permitted to now conditional, that if they wanted to make any substantial changes, it would be beneficial for them to come back and then go through the BZA, um.
So my point here is this, a decision like this is going to delay this, delay this now for a while. I don't think we can just make this decision without.
Well, if we're gonna go in that direction.
Without investigating the ramifications.
Correct, if we're gonna go dig deeper into this, um, I think, I think I would.
Well, based on the line of thinking here, we're gonna have to delve deeper.
And it does, it would put this up.
Because how do you pit a gas station against a, a, a commercial parking lot or a outdoor recreational facility? Uh, you know, I, I, I just, I think, based on what you're suggesting, if there is a consensus here to go forward, we're on hold.
Well, let's see if there's consensus.
Cause there's too much, there's too many here to not go through them piece by piece.
And the fact.
Because I don't know how you can wait.
This is why we've already done it, we've already done, we already went through this.
That's what I thought.
And this is a, yeah, I, 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 I know we have the right to bring it up and I'm not saying you don't.
Right, no, no, I'm not, and I'm not, yeah, I'm not arguing against you, Ed, I'm just, I'm arguing against the process and the procedure now. Because now we're complicating things.
I just want to get right, I don't want quality to go so much farther than that and however may sessions with that and what.
But then I suggest we.
So the, the, the biggest con- I, I understand, but the biggest concern is really taking a look at our county, understanding that each community is different and you've got to be looked at that way. We've gotta have, we've gotta have tools in place.
Oh, you had to understand, you went through this first time?
We've gotta have tools in place to allow for folks to be more engaged.
Oh, are you, are you pointing back to my original thought that we should have a stakeholder involved in the?
Stakeholders have been involved, stakeholders have been involved from day one.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, have a voice in the writing, or when it was being developed.
They are, they have been from day one, I believe.
Okay, well. So, and I, and I agree with you in many aspects on this, that the, the county is different from one end to the other, uh, east to west and each, each property needs to be viewed as an individual property. This is very difficult, this is not an easy process. I know a lot of time is running to it, but how much time is a day to do it right?
Can we put into?
What are you gonna find next?
So, so, so you're saying this is not wrong right now? You're saying this is not right?
No, no. Well, I'm not gonna wanna.
That's what you're saying, this, well, I think we can be. Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are, this is just that we made a statement.
My, my, my concern is to make sure we're taking into consideration how properties are conform to, to, and I'm specifically in C one. And we're only talking about three hundred properties across the county, give or take.
Roughly.
Roughly. And we're only talking about in district one, in district five, excuse me, one unbroken ground on C one. We're not talking about a lot of properties. What I'm concerned about is that we don't allow something in C one, and you know, you know why? You know, that we don't allow something in C one in Aldersburg as it's the same as in Limeboro. Because the services necessary and wanted in Limeboro are very different than those that are in Aldersburg. And I wanna make sure that we put into place that consideration, whether we do it this way or we put in somehow any twenty four seven operations or any, you know, whatever qualifications we put in there would go through a process, whether it's a BZA process or planning and zoning if permitted. And that be put in consideration, because one of the things we put into consideration with planning and zoning when they break grounds, landscaping, is fencing, okay? What we could possibly add on to those criteria are twenty four seven operations or other considerations to how they're gonna conform to that community. And that goes for C one through I whatever.
Aren't there buffer regulations in place anyway?
There are buffers and setbacks that, I mean, requirements, I mean, we have that.
So what we can do is we can add on to that by saying not just buffer setbacks, but also hours of operation for, you know, uh, lighting, whatever it could be.
Sure we can do that.
So, are you asking for in a C one, if going with permitted, now adding additional, um, I guess restriction that you cannot be in twenty four seven?
No.
Or?
I'm not, I'm making it to, no, I'm making it conditional to bring that into consideration. Not sure, that's all, that, that's what it is, not saying I'm lim- I'm limited to this. So I'm not against twenty four seven operations, I'm saying they are suitable for some places, but not others in C one properties.
That is sort of the point of the conditional use, is whether or not they, it's more appropriate in this location as opposed to elsewhere within the same zone, so.
Exactly.
That, that's the kind of, that is the analysis that the board of zoning appeals is supposed to do.
That's right. And that's what I believe I wanna do, but that, that's the only thing I'm, I'm looking at. I'm not, yeah, that, that, that's it. yeah, that that that's it, exactly what our administrator said.
What she said.
Is that we put into consideration the community when we're looking at C one properties. That's it. Now whether we make it
Well, I thought we did, we did that when we looked at the size restrictions and the setbacks and everything else that that C one entails and C two and C three does entail, that's why it's C one.
I didn't We did. I know. I know. And I'm saying, I know, I do not believe I put enough consideration into this. And there are concerns that I have. Right. And if we make them conditional, I do not believe it will cause such a little effect that you're concerned about. There are three hundred properties, and if you look at those three hundred properties, I've seen one, and you could really do a breakdown, you're gonna be talking about a dozen properties, give or take.
That you're changing to make sure everybody else is happy.
That that could not necessarily change, that have to go through that additional step. And that's it, and that and that additional step is B Z A. And with something like Royal Farms or highest over on in Finsburg, they'd be like, yeah, you've been there for quite some time, you are conforming to those quarters, got it, move on. It it's it's just another ability for checks and balance to ensure that we maintain the culture of our county, that's it.
I like the budget process much better than the zoning process.
Me too.
Wow. So so based on what you're saying, based on what you're saying then, we're not gonna do anything today. We need to go back to another work session. And we've gotta go down through all this C one again.
And before you get to the work session, we gotta find how many properties it impacts and where they are.
Which is my point, which is because
Right, so it's gonna be
Because we can't, we can't just pluck fuel stations out because Aunt Bessie's picked off at the Royal Farms. I'm sorry. We can't. So we've got, we've we've we got, this this stops the whole thing if if you all wanna do that and we need to go back to the work sessions. Because I wanna hear from everybody. I wanna hear from Clay, I wanna hear from Tom, I wanna hear from Jay, I wanna hear from Jack, I wanna hear from everybody. So that's a work session again. And we've already done this, but here we go, and we're gonna do it again. And when we get to the end of that, then somebody's gonna come up with something else and we're still gonna say, well, I don't think we got it right, so now let's look at it again. I I I, this, I'm exhausted. We have sat here and went through all of these. With the setbacks, with the buffers, with the everything. We even went down individually almost with each each commercial property.
Unfortunately.
But yet we're gonna do that again. Now that's what you're suggesting.
Is is future of the county worth it?
Absolutely.
To to keep working on it? If that's what you guys wanna do, then absolutely, that's 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 throw this all away and start again.
Okay, when you put it out like that, who, when you put it out like that, who's gonna say, oh, future county, no one's gonna say future county's not worth it, but that's not, that's not the way to put it out here. Put it out here
Dick doesn't think it's You you don't like almost anything that's in here.
No, no, no.
No, I couldn't say that.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Have we done a a comprehensive job on this particular zoning tax, taxes so forth so far?
Yes.
That's the way, have we done it? Have we looked at all these things? Have we gone through step by step and looked at all, exactly, so did I.
I've always did that.
So I am, I'm ready to move forward with it. I don't know how the rest of you are, I'm ready to move forward with what we, the product that we have in front of us right now. If three of you are, then we're not doing it.
Then we go back to the table.
But if three of you are, or two others are, then we're looking at this and we're we're moving it forward.
I'm gonna realize, I am, I just want
You, no, you're not.
No, I am, no, I am. I want to consider a few adjustments and then move forward.
So then we gotta go back to the, I think we need to go back to the table to hear from all, for all the parties. If that's what you wanna do.
What do you think, Mr. Shu Shu, what's your opinion?
I wanna hear from Mister Lyber.
So it's interesting.
He don't wanna talk to it like
For a long time ago, I don't make policy, I know I don't like it.
We we know that. Well, in order to make, and and that 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 goes to the question that I just said, if that's if that's your intent, and you're, I think, I know where you're going with that question, then we need to go back to the work sessions. Because that's what you're asking to hear from the rest of them, then
Right.
I'm wondering
I know where we are here, Dennis and I wanna move.
I I actually don't
Dick doesn't, cause he doesn't like, he only likes about fifty percent of this anyway.
I wanna move.
You only like about ninety percent of it.
Ninety percent.
I wanna move forward.
I I I'm I'm telling you, I like about ninety, ninety-five percent. I am concerned there are fewer issues on my free photo.
But but to pick just that fruit off of that tree, we can't do that today.
You're right. Well, you can.
No, not that, and not in my mind we can. We've gotta hear from all parties to see how this affects the B Z A, the P and C, everybody.
You're you're right, if we're gonna, right, if we're gonna make changes from 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 edit to conditional on uh initiatives we're gonna have to go through it like we did the first time and hear from the, from people involved.
Exactly. And I'm not saying we have to do it otherwise. No, and I I don't wanna do it either otherwise. I'm not saying we have to go through the whole entire thing again, but if you have serious concerns about C one, then then I will not accept making those decisions today without hearing all that are affected. Because that's how we made every other decision to hear.
I agree. That's exactly it.
I follow that. I I'm I'm, you know, I'm I'm saying, I'm looking for quality. I'm looking, just because we can doesn't mean we should. Just because we can, accept this the way it is right now, absolutely we should not. And there are considerations.
No, not just because we can, but because we've done a very good job.
I I believe there I think we've done a very good job. I think if this is the case and I have concerns and you believe those concerns are better addressed in a work session, then that's fine.
Well, that's how we get everything else. Why wouldn't we do that?
No, I'm I'm saying, and that's fine. I thought, my con- my concerns, I thought, were limited enough where when you look and address these C one, but do you believe
Well, because when I, when when we went down the list, Ed, in the C one list, you know, I can't see how you are weighing a fuel station against a a a commercial parking lot or an outdoor recreational area or a blah blah, it it just keeps going. So in order for that to happen, that's what I'm saying, you just can't pluck a fuel station out. You can't do that. Cause there are, there are facilities on C one that would have more challenges than just a fuel station.
So it's gonna be my approach to looking at these as conditional, just so in in preparation and, you know.
Are there places in C one where a fuel station fits?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there places it doesn't fit? In a C one district?
Probably.
That's the, that's why you make it conditional. That's exactly the reason why we, that's exactly why we make it conditional.
Are there places where a religious establishment is good?
Yeah.
Or not?
You have to look
So then why do you have this at all?
Well, you have to look
You have to have a a format to go there.
If you're gonna make everything conditional, why do you even need this?
Not everything conditional, but there's some things that
We've already done this, we've already done this. We went through each one of these. I'm against this, but I get the sense that you would.
No, why don't we find out?
Okay. Yeah, cause this is it, so what are we doing here? You you wanna, you wanna stop, you wanna work that? I know you wanna stop, you have to say
Well, the motion you're up for is to move this to public hearing.
No, no, we're not, we're looking for adoption.
Adoption.
Yeah, they're not looking for this adoption.
Right, okay.
I wanna go back to Jack. Jack, I know you don't make policy, but we pay you a lot of money to advise us on issues.
Way too much.
But it's it's more than just Jack.
I I understand, I understand that.
Eric. It's it's the, it's 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 more, for me, it's more about the the B Z As, it's more about Jay, it's more about Clay, it's more about Tom.
And I'm I'm more about
It's not about Jack.
Never about Jack.
But if we delay this thing and go back on and rehash it, is it going to have a negative impact upon our economic development? That's all I'm looking for.
Okay, that's a different question, okay.
I got cut off before I could get to where I wanted to go.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Are we better off moving forward as is or going back and rehashing this thing? It's not a policy question, or it's not asking you for policy, it's asking you for your your expertise on this field.
Sensitive question. There's a whole T V behind me that wherever, you know, if you got the B Z A, you you have a lot of other players besides myself involved in this. You know. Um, there's been a lot of time spent on this. I don't know if you, you know, we can always go back and second guess everything, but you know, we need to do it right. But holding it up isn't isn't gonna affect anything right now, but you've spent a lot of time going over this and, you know, I've I've spent a lot of time with Clay and my staff and everybody behind me has spent a lot of time doing this. So I'll stop there.
Are you happy with our product so far?
Yeah, it's a very political question. We spent, I've spent a lot of time personally, my staff, everybody sitting behind me on the team has spent a lot of time putting down, you know, what what we think on C one.
Jack's not a problem here. I I know he's not, but I seek his advice because I respect it.
Well, okay. Scenario, let's say we hold this off, we go back, we get all information, law comes out, and we come up here three months from now, or the exact same thing.
One month.
All right, whatever, let's say three months, it's my scenario, you have your scenario later. Three months from now, we come back here, we're doing this again, and then someone comes up with something, oh, wait, C threes, I think we should put the, are we gonna do the same thing again and again and again?
Yes.
When does it stop?
It's not done.
We've gone through everything here. Item by item by item, we went through it all. We heard from all the parties, we've done, I mean, I'm not saying you're gonna have legitimate concerns, I'm not saying that you don't. However, we've gone through it. My fear is three months from now, we're, oh, wait, we're we're gonna hit it again, and we're gonna hit it again. It might never stop.
Oh, and by the way And by the way, we're delaying everything else now too.
But just by
Because there are folks that are getting ready to line up that wanna come in for
Trust me, I agree.
For for changes, so now they've been pushed back. Uh, ag zoning, pushing that back, that's gonna be a real great time.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I wanna
So
Make a motion that we adopt the ordinances, chapters one fifty-eight, one fifty-five, and the map and the and the impact of code.
I will second that.
Well, that's interesting.
That's it, good.
Linda, if if
No, now you open up your discussion.
Okay, that's why I'm, that's what I'm doing. It's what we already did. Uh, in your mind, and I'm trying, I'm trying to play I'm I'm trying to play the compromised person here, so let's be clear what I'm trying to do here. Uh In in your mind, your department, what would you see as the as the timeline if we would go back and just looked at C one? Knowing that we're certainly gonna be in January, let's be clear, because there's no time till the end of the year, okay? So, um, could we, could we reasonably do another work session to address the C ones? Because there's more to it than just fuel stations. And still come back to adopt in a reasonable amount of time to get it done by the end of January?
So So if the direction from staff is to go and investigate every permitted use in the C one, to see the order of magnitude and which it would affect, so then that would be us investigating the roughly three hundred properties that this would affect and seeing, um, what what they currently are on the ground, um. Realistically, I I I think we could get it done by the end of January, so I would see us maybe end of January, beginning of February coming.
That's just for your
You're, but but here here's a compromise. Why not look at adopting this not as in entirety, but holding off the C one and let's look at the rest of the code excluding C one? Why not, why can't you, why can't we look at
Yeah, because that would leave some properties still left in business neighborhood retail that, um, we would not definitely be able to adopt the maps today because the maps have
So we don't adopt the maps? Or we look, we look at
Then it's not changing, that goes, you're changing the text without any implications on the ground, so that could be problematic. I think I would really need to think how
Okay.
How that would even work before I could answer even more beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe that But not like, yeah, well, I do
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, that, that is a thought, I'm I'm faulting you for that thought because that actually
Yeah, it's another thought, if you want it. Don't shoot me. So this is as, this is not done. The code, we will continue to, you know, work on residential, agricultural and and conservation. And we've said all along that, um, this is comprehensive in the way that we're approaching this. So that, um, if there is a change needed in these three or four sections that we find as we move forward with the with the next sections, then we can always go back and change these. So
It probably not.
You could do maybe a dual thing, adopt this and then ask staff to do that review. And if you found there would be any changes necessary, you could, you could change them as you go on to the next phase of residential. Just a thought.
I think it's brilliant.
No one shot me, right?
If that was the case, then I would still consider not looking at all the C one properties as conditional, but picking the most likely that would have concerns. And it would be that's your free, you know, reason of that.
Your highest priority, so to speak.
Right, exactly.
Which are what, Ed?
Which would be gas stations, detectors.
So that's two, is it, you said a third?
There's a third? There was a third based on conversation that the five of us had, because I'm having a difficult time figuring out why
I'll leave it until
A parking facility is not as important as a gas station.
Exactly. I know.
So where does it stop?
And but So, but I would look at the most likely at this point and add that consideration that I'm afraid to talk about, looking at the other properties before you move forward. But theoretically, you're right. It looks off, you're right, that it could be any one of these, but pragmatically, I probably you know, a couple of specifics, pragmatically.
That you're most concerned about.
Most concerned about. And those taverns, um, gas stations. And then we live with that and we move forward. That's that's a pragmatic approach as opposed to, cause I agree with what you're saying, but to get us to the next step. You know.
You're dealing with future businesses here, you're dealing with, it's something anyway, I feel.
Okay.
But if we agree to that, I mean
I mean, does it work?
Yeah, I know.
I know, but if we agree, if we if we agree to that step
Why haven't they?
If if we agree to this step, it's gonna keep us moving forward. And then we can continue having conversation on this.
Right.
As opposed to stop. And if you if you
But 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 you're adopting something today, if that goes that way. It kinda gets back to what you're saying, you're adopting it, but yet you don't like C one.
Isn't that somewhat disingenuous to adopt it and saying we're gonna come back and change it though?
Yeah, that's it, that's the problem, I haven't won.
No.
Yeah.
Cause I just think No, I don't, I don't, but
We're adopting it, but
No, I I
We're adopting it, but next week we're gonna change it.
No, no, I don't believe, no, come on, so
Doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't.
Hold on, I I don't believe next week we're gonna change it. I do believe that with the intent of what we want to accomplish being comprehensive, and we said this from day one, that as we move forward, as our administrator said, into residential and agriculture, that we would have the ability to look at its effects on commercial industrial. And we will be making those decisions appropriately. This is comprehensive, we have to start somewhere, so we decided to start here with three categories.
That's what you're saying all along.
It is comprehensive, it is. I'm gonna throw something at you. So to move forward, again, if you, if we do this pragmatically with those couple of categories, continue to have this conversation, get through this hurdle, we will be starting residential the new year. And then this will always be not necessarily open for change, but available for us to consider, just like any other law that we put in place.
Well, then why not adopt it today and then just
We may, that's what I'm saying.
And then go back to the
I'm saying I'll
Go back to it if we have to.
I want to adopt it today. I'm in a position to recommend for adoption. I do wanna take a look under a few issues for discussion and consideration to make those simple changes and then adopt this product. That's what I'm, what I'm doing.
We'll never come back to it.
Yes, we would, absolutely, just like, just like we'll come back to the master plan, just like we'll come back to the freedom plan. That is our, that is our responsibility. We write the law, we have the ability to change the law. That's our responsibility. If we put it on the shelf and not come back to it, then we're doing this service
It's hard to do, we have to go back to it.
We're going to.
I, I know. Yeah, but the thing about it is, we're not putting this to bed,
That's right.
Putting it on the shelf, because as we have identified, and I am vehemently deny disagreeing with your opinion on this, and I have throughout this whole process.
Right.
Because I've about had it with all the comments about nobody knows what's going on, I'm done with all of that, I'm done with it. If you put this on the shelf today and, and wouldn't be going through other sections that would affect this section, then I would agree that no, we'll never come back to it.
Right.
Although, I would say to you that that's really closed minded thinking about how the five of us work. I think that's, that, that to me is, is so negative that I can't even begin to fathom where you're going with that. But I will say that if, because this is a work in progress, and if there are other sections of this code affect these three that we've already done, and we've already identified that they probably will,
Right.
then isn't that comprehensive? Isn't that what we're doing anyway?
Yes.
I'm, I'm done with the, with the, with the negative, the attacks to our staff and everything else that comes flying out of the, of everywhere. There have been tons and tons and tons of work done on this.
Well, there's a lot of work to be, has been done, there's a lot, a little bit to go through and put it together. I mean, I, I don't think you just stop short because you wanna pass something, I think you wanna do it. And I want it right when it's done, because this is good, a ten year vision for the county and it has to be done that way.
That can be,
So it takes us an extra month, is that?
No, but I think, I think we are, I, I think, I think we're, again, let's look at this pragmatic.
No.
Let's get this thing adopted with the intent to get this thing adopted today. A couple of concerns I do have. We address, whether we accept or not accept, that's where we're at, but the intent is to adopt this today. Pragmatically, we look at this, I understand where you wanna go, and I think, I absolutely, and I said it a couple minutes ago, it is irresponsible if we take this, put it into law, and say that's it, and put it on the shelf. It is, no, it, it's irrefine, it is our responsibility to always have the ability to address the laws that we put in place.
But as we get through this, Ed, what I'm saying is, you have a tendency, if you're not looking right at it, it has a tendency not to be in the forefront.
I promise you, I promise you, I promise you for me, this will be in the forefront.
And because, because of the fact we've got other sections to go,
It's absolute, it'll always have to be.
It's gonna be in our face for the next six, seven, eight months anyway.
Right, exactly. So.
Um, so, you know, that's, and I wanna, I've gotta respect for those folks that are standing in line waiting to commit the change orders too, right?
So, so I,
because they're, they're waiting.
Right.
And we're, we're, you, you know, the question that you asked Eric to Jack, um, you, you kinda hit on something there that didn't get deep enough.
Right.
There are people that are waiting to, to make a change here, and we're essentially saying, oh, well, we're not quite ready yet, so you all just keep, you keep standing in line, we'll, we'll get to you, almost like the NBA, you should, right?
Yes, you made a tremendous point, yeah, there's a lot of investors out there, and I think the longer we take on this, the more of a negative impact it potentially has upon economic development, and that's something I can't pin on. I want to be very friendly and helpful to investors of our county. Ed's made legitimate concerns, I emphasize, I understand those as well, but somehow or another, we gotta strike some sort of compromise here to move forward and not inhibit the economic development in our county, which is a little,
So, so my point is, let's move forward.
Grandfather clause, yeah?
So, so, hold on, Matt, so, so, where, Eric, you're going, my point is, let's move forward. Pragmatically, look at those couple of situations. Another situation, I do agree, grandfathering some concerns that are specifically, that are going to go into the I one.
On your grandfather.
Be grandfathered until the comprehensive plan is complete.
Only grandfather.
What?
No. That's where I'm going. We, we, um, we established an appropriate, um, grandfathering for limited change for all the reasons, and we have that in place, and I agree with that. There are other locations that are transitioning from, uh, you know, that have the ability for being R B G, that are going into I one. Okay, specifically, and then I'm looking, you know, in District Five, allowing them to continue their operations as is, in I one, not taking away any I two. And we've talked about this, and, and you agree with this approach as well. Um, and I apologize, I'm quoting Jack, uh, that's the only other consideration I had to put in place, and then I'm ready to adopt this. Those two bases is, and you, you know where I'm coming from, Linda, with the B, BG of B R, um,
I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm,
So there's more?
No, it's just one more. That's it, it's just the one. Is, where is it, it was taken out with the code.
I know we got a motion to second it, I got it, I got that, I'm just trying to be respectful.
You're doing a wonderful job.
That's all. Because I, I, if, if you feel that strongly about it, I may,
And then I'm ready to adopt, I'm ready to adopt this.
I'm ready to tell Mr. Lefty how happy and looking forward to the budget process.
Commissioners, developers, especially when they get out of banking, get financing, they have to know where, where the end is gonna be. You know, and, you know, time is of the essence on this, like Commissioner Boucher said, but you can't be changing, you, you can't be changing, I shouldn't say that. But developer wants to know, there, there's no surprises in this, if you adopt this now and you come back with surprises, you got a whole, a whole lot of attorneys back there would probably love to do, but there's people that would probably line up for the B Z A if you don't adopt it, because they, they, they need to, you know, there's timing is the essence. Timing is of the essence on this, but just make sure that, you know, developers know where the end result's gonna be. When they go to get the loans, you, you can't, you know, changing in the midstream is, is very difficult for a developer, it's very important.
Absolutely, and again, I've been, I've been in that role as well, and I hundred percent agree, that's why, and, and you know, and everybody knows, I wanna get this thing adopted.
Yeah.
And I, I was pushing in the last work session to get this thing in place, uh, as soon as we can, and I believe we can today. I think there's those two adjustments, I would like to make amendments into this, and then adopt this today, and then move forward.
But this has to be a living document, you gotta come back and do this, you can't wait months and months and months to come back, I'm just concerned that, you know, it might happen.
Okay.
Well, let's be clear, this thing's gonna, our master, our, our master plan is living and breathing, I mean,
That's right.
We're, we're, the next thing we're gonna do is make amendments to that. To, to suggest that we're gonna throw this onto the file cabinet and not look at it until, well, for us, it would be past twenty twenty-two. But,
Good sir.
is ludicrous to me, because it is living, living and breathing.
Right. Absolutely agree.
So, um, so what was your other?
Go ahead, Linda.
It was the, it was the gas station and what else?
Oh, taverns.
So, again, understanding what I, what, what was before us had to do with the grandfathering and all the current uses that are, um, allowed as a principal permitted use via the pass through. Um, that would be problematic, because it would still be maintaining then two codes, um, that was one of the main tenants in moving forward, was the elimination of pass through uses, so by allowing and grandfathering in every single use on the ground today as a, um, principal permitted, and then moving forward, any new development would be the implementation of the new code as this reads, that, that's what that,
Right.
that's what this is, and so we would,
Existing uses being grandfathered.
That, but they would be grandfathered under the old code, so we'd still be maintaining that B N R B G in how that reads, and, and therefore, the implementation will only be on new development, um, so,
Can we make it an effective date or no?
Well, that's still, you'd still be holding on to the, and that was one of the main tenants, we were, we were really working on eliminating that
I would still, we would still have that.
because of the challenges and administering even currently, so then having to go back and look at that. And again, I think a lot of the research that we've done, the impact i- is fairly minimal moving forward, so, you know, when you adopt a plan, the idea is the implementation to move forward, this is the implementation to move forward, this still holds on to remnants of the past. So I think that the fundamental decision is do we, does the board want to move forward with the new body that's in front of you, so I, I,
Well, you know we want to move forward, um,
I, I would be willing, Ed. I would be willing to, to go with the amendment
Mm-hmm.
for fuel stations to be conditional. If that passes this document,
Yeah.
and that's where I'd roll along. And,
So, yeah, this, we need to, I don't think we can do that today.
Well,
Come on, you're the one who's very willing.
I, I don't understand what this, I, It gets, it gets to a point to me, and I'm, I'm doing this because I do see the fuel stations, but if you're gonna continue, if you're gonna add restaurants and taverns, that's where I have the problem, where does it stop? Because there are other things in here that are worse than that. You know, a restaurant or a tavern, you know, one o'clock, A M, they're done. See ya, a gas station has the potential to be there all night, I get that, so the NIMBYs are gonna go, woo, you know, so I would be willing.
I, I, we, we moved on through this story.
I think, I got that, so that's why, well, you asked me.
I know.
That's unfortunate, yeah, don't ask me again.
You believe in dinosaur park?
Oh my God, see that? That's why it's living and breathing.
So it's a motion with the amendment?
Well, if someone's gonna make the amendments.
I mean, I, I would be willing to do that, but that's as far as I'm going, because I can see that that would be,
So the motion would be to then amend C one to make gas stations conditional
Conditional in C one.
in C one, from permitted to conditional.
So, do, can I make that amendment, or does somebody who made that motion,
You can,
I'll make the amendment.
You, you make, you make the amendment asking the person who made the motion to agree.
Okay, change it.
No.
And then, and then, and then,
I don't have to agree to what you're saying, go ahead.
And then the person who seconded it has to agree as well.
Oh, well, that's the one that he brought up in the initial, and if you get, if, if you can get this document, and I know how you're going, I got it, but if it gets this passed, because I, this is becoming
Okay.
a, a borderline disrespectful to everybody that's put the hours and hours of work into it. Yes, it is.
I will agree to that amendment of my motion.
This is what, this is what we're here to do, and do it right.
I will second that.
I agree to the amendment of my motion, and it's, it's my second.
Okay.
I think that was very big of you, President.
All right, you got it?
Yep.
And you seconded it?
Yes, sir.
With that amendment? Okay. Boy, I hate to, hesitate to do this.
Quick, quick, quick.
Vote on amendment first.
Yeah, we gotta vote only amendment first, right, and then vote for or not, no, because it's an amended motion.
It's amended motion.
It's an amended motion, it's not a separate.
Okay.
Right.
Where's, where's Bobby when you need him?
Right.
Robert. Anyway.
You were best friends with Robert.
Yeah, Bobby and I, we wrote the book, anyway, um,
You bought the book, sitting on the shelf.
It's on the shelf.
Further discussion.
Any further discussion on the motion, the amended motion?
Understanding that as we move forward, just as we do with the master plan and any other law that we put in place, we have the ability and responsibility to address it appropriately when we feel necessary.
Absolutely.
And it's important, because, that's right, and I know it's rhetorical, but it's important as we're moving forward with the rest of the zoning, the components of zoning. And because there are still considerations that I want to address throughout this.
And,
But adopting it as a whole now is the appropriate move.
And I agree with you one hundred percent on that, and I will add to the fact that some of the decisions we're gonna make in ag, in conservation and residential will probably affect some of the decisions that we've already made in C one, two, I, and et cetera.
Correct.
So it's gonna be fluid anyway, right?
Correct.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain until I see the completed document.
You abstained?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
Do I see the completed document?
All right, so it passes.
I know, go away.
I'm here, I'm here.
Wait, that was just zoning, so do the, All right.
Um, you need to do all three.
All four and resolution.
All four, yeah. So what would, what, the motion need one fifty-five, one fifty-eight? Okay, that was all, all three, take the motion.
Yes, yeah, that adopted, we just, we just adopted this.
And the,
I think that'd be one fifty-eight, one fifty-five, and then the, uh, the map, and the,
Yeah. No, they're fine, they're fine, they're fine.
I'm sorry.
Okay, next steps, Linda?
We're cool.
Next steps, we'll be back before you on the nineteenth, um, to, uh, wrong, I made a car, we'll be back before you on the nineteenth to go over the next steps with you, um, and, uh, how we'll move forward with the by request phase, and then how we'll be moving forward with the residential district.
Okay, as I said before, and I think several of my colleagues agree, the by request phase has got to happen ASAP. Because there are businesses lined up out there that are waiting for the by request, that's, that's my whole issue with this, we're costing people money.
And this code will go into effect on December twenty-second.
Okay.
Per our code, which is ten days after the adoption.
All right, okay.
Mr. Libern, I'd like to apologize for being testy with you, I feel like my mother is always watching me and she lectures me, so I'm sorry.
All right.
Oh, very good.
Okay. Um, amendments to the twenty-fourteen master plan, now this is the public hearing part. So those that have been here waiting diligently to speak, and there is none, um, so you wanna introduce this, or should I go right to Mr. Burke?
Yes, good, good morning, Commissioners, on Halloween, October thirty-first and on November twenty-first, uh, you were introduced to, and you reviewed some amendments to, that were recommended by the Planning Commission to our two thousand and fourteen master plan. These amendments concerned, uh, transportation chapter, municipal growth area boundaries, uh, lists of planned roads, road improvements, uh, transportation enhancement recommendations, environmental resource recommendation, recommended changes to include code references and to accommodate some solar uses, and to update land use definitions to be consistent with our, our two thousand and eighteen Freedom Plan. This, uh, public hearing was advertised in the Carroll County Times on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and December fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Still with us are your planning staff, your director, Linda Eisenberg, and Mary Lane.
Emphasis on still?
Uh, yes, they would like to make a few comments, I think, uh, about what, what you talked about on October thirty-first and the twenty-first of November, and to see if they, they received any public comments on it.
No, so, um, so again, still here, um, we have not received any comments to date, um, and when we presented to you on this, uh, prior dates, um, Planning Commission also hosted a public hearing August twentieth, they received no public comments then. Um, we have not received any written or oral comments either to date, um, on the amendment for this public hearing. So again, I think, uh, Mr. Burke articulated, um, uh, the summary of what the changes are, um, with regards to that, and I'm happy to go through additional, uh, information from our last meeting, with the same data and information I've shown before.
I don't know that that's necessary, I think we're good, right?
Okay.
All right, so, uh, Tim, do we need, just, this is the hearing, so you need to close it.
Ms. Hoover, do you have any comments?
We do have one.
Yes, need a, a motion to close, and then you usually keep it open for ten additional days.
All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and keep the record open for ten additional days.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, have a good afternoon.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate all of it.
Thank you.
All right.
And that's what we do, and I will, I'll, listen, the, these, these, these debates and all that we do, the conversations are, are vitally important.
They're very helpful.
While I get, my feathers ruffle a little bit every now and then, I, I do appreciate the conversations that we have, I think it's important, so,
Yeah, so do I.
So kudos, there might be one less Christmas gift under the tree for a couple of you, but whatever. You can do that, don't you, okay, there's probably seven now. All right, anything for open admin? Anything for open admin?
Yes, yes.
I'm talking to you, pay attention.
Very quickly, sorry, I was, um, um, short attention, sorry. Um, as we have to do each year, um, we have to appoint a person, to Maryland annotated code, we have to appoint, um, the tax collector. And, um, the lucky, lucky winner of the tax collector appointment is, has been for years and years, and hopefully will continue to be, Rob Burke, our comptroller. So I have a, just a, a letter of appointment for him as tax collector in your, in your file of things to sign. things to sign.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Need, need, just sign the letter. No, just sign the.
Just sign the letters. Okay. Anybody have a problem with Rob Burke being a tax collector? You might want to let him borrow your hat or something.
Yeah, they'll sweep a chimney.
All right, anything else? Open admin. Okay. Agendas. Week of December the 16th, nothing. On Monday, Tuesday the 17th, Commissioner Rossing has Planning and Zoning, 9:00 AM. The Commission on Aging and Disabilities Holiday Breakfast is at 9:30. It's myself, Fraser, and.
I'm not sure I can make it 9:30. Who, who will go with that?
I'll take care of that for you. 11:30, we have a dedication of the charging station out here, the ribbon cutting, if you will, and the five of us will be at that. That's 11:30 on the 17th. Cannot park in one of it? Never mind. At noon is the Veterans Advisory Council Holiday Luncheon. Commissioner Weaver, I will also be there.
I believe there's another event that I'm attending at the exact same time. That's why I'm not there.
Okay, 17th at noon.
Okay, I'm not sure where it is.
Okay, well, you can add me to that, because I'll be there.
Oh, I apologize, the Planning and Zoning.
Luncheon, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going from Planning and Zoning to a luncheon. That's it.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll add me there. Okay. The Veterans Advisory Council Meeting is at 2:00 PM. That's Commissioner Weaver.
And I will also be attending that.
Okay. Economic Development has their open house here at 5:00 PM that day, and the five of us will be attending that. Wednesday, the 18th, is the Carroll Community College Board Meeting. Commissioner Fraser at 6:00 PM at the college. Thursday, the 19th, we have open session to include installation of residential water meters, stabilization, discharge, pony run, Francis Scott Key Sewerage Pumping Station, approval of the Transportation Development Plan, revised Trailblazer routes, permits, resin renovation, project contractor, high-quality waters review, MBE.
High-quality ACE tour.
We have a public hearing on a community development block grant, and more on that? Oh, that's the homeless initiative?
Yeah, we took it, but I think those block grants haven't come back to it earlier.
Right, okay.
It's just like that final wrap-up public hearing.
All right. We also have a request approval to submit a Calhoun Foundation Grant Application. And what is this? After-action briefing? Oh, that's when they're coming back to us on the 19th, for the, for the next steps. Okay. At 1:00 PM that day, the five of us will be participating in a visioning strategic planning session. That's at 1:00 PM at Bear Branch Nature Center. At 4:30 PM, the Carroll County State's Attorney has their holiday Hoot and Nanny.
I'll be there.
That's at 4:30. That actually is at the FOP Lodge, I believe. Friday, the 20th, the Opioid Senior Policy Group meets, 9:00 AM. Commissioner Fraser, and it's the Wance Podcast. The next week, obviously, is not much going on. That's Christmas week. As I said, there's really nothing going on.
I usually think that nobody listens to these podcasts.
They do.
They do.
Oh, yesterday I was somewhere, and Judge Titus came up and thanked me for mentioning him in the podcast, and it's a very surprise.
Yeah, a lot of, just to be clear, there's two people that get up on, at 7:00 AM to listen to WTTR thing.
But they're on our, they're on our website.
But it's on the website, so that's why we changed the podcast, because it does stream out to a lot more people, the TTR Sunday Morning crowd.
Well, we've been doing that for years. We just changed the name.
But I, I was really astounded to hear him say something that he had listened to it.
You mean, I've been skipping church and getting up at 7:00 o'clock on Sunday morning to listen to you guys, and I could, I could listen on, on the computer?
You do, don't you?
Isn't that amazing? That you could have done that? You didn't know that? Burke, come on.
You're opening yourself up almost as a official. Do you really want to do that right now?
All right. A, a reminder to everyone that county offices will be closed on Tuesday the 24th at noon, and obviously closed on the 25th and the 26th. Back open on Friday the 27th, and Commissioner Weaver has the podcast during Christmas week.
Do you want to mention New Year's Eve?
So we also, because it's going to come out, we also made a decision today, and I thank my colleagues for agreeing to that. We also will be closing early the next week on New Year's Eve at noon, and close on New Year's Day.
And I'm sure.
Wait a minute.
Staff will be.
Hear everybody applauding?
Very, staff will be very appreciative.
Yeah, so we decided to take that action as well the following week for New Year's, and I think.
Except for some.
Except for some.
You're not Ebenezer. Do you get visited by ghosts or something?
Yeah, there was a guy in a hat. So, anything else for the agendas? A reminder that this afternoon, we have the joint meeting with the Board of Education. That's an away game for us, so we'll be in the Charles Eckhart Board Room for that, and that begins at 1:00 PM. And Ravens game tonight, Thursday, tonight. A couple of us will be at MML tonight as well. I have told the president of MML that if he doesn't have it wrapped up by about 8:00 o'clock, there's going to be serious consequences. I need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be careful out there. Thank you. Don't forget about Reads Across America Saturday at noon.